The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the city of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about city of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office, (920) 967-3608. Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
I'd like to call the city of Manassia Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start this evening, Alderman Sevigny would like to...
Thank you, Mayor. As you see on the screen today, the city of Manassia lost a very important individual for the city of Manassia. And I was asked to read this tonight. His name is Kenneth Stumpf. And he is one of the Congressional Medal of Honor winners in the city of Manassia. And there were only two, but that in the city of Manassia, but you know what? What that means is that there's only one other community that had more than two Medal of Honor winners. And so I will read my prepared comment here that I would like for us to take a moment of silence for this hero. Army veteran Kenneth Stumpf, who recently passed away. Mr. Stumpf, a Manassia resident, received the Congressional Medal of Honor for his service to our country. He was a squad leader. And he searched and he was deployed in a mission in Vietnam. His squad, in the squad, he eliminated two of three enemy positions, and he saved the life of three of his colleagues. He basically carried them on his back. And if you've ever would see a movie, this is a true hero, and he came from Manassia. As I had stated before, Manassia, Wisconsin, Pablo, Colorado are only two communities in the United States that have a resident who received the Congressional Medal of Honor. So this evening, I'm very honored to honor him, and I'm glad that this community has a hero like this. And I'm very proud of Mr. Stumpf and what he's done for us and our community. Thank you. And as you can see, President Johnson there giving him the medal. And then Mr. Stumpf is the man in the middle cutting a ribbon at one of the veterans ceremonies. Thank you.
If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Tom Gotti.
Here.
Alderman Ted Gotti.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Isenek.
Here.
Alderman Sevigny.
Here.
Alderman Hammond.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
All are present.
The first item on the agenda this evening is the report of department head, staff, and consultants. Do we have a motion for the minutes in communications? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through J and Communications K through O.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second discussion? Alderman Gotti?
I'd just like to... Oh, good. You've got it up. Thanks, Haley. Thanks, Mayor. I would like to let the public know that the Landmarks Commission is honoring again the Architectural Awareness Month of May. And we teamed up this year with the Landmark, or the Historical Society, and then we're going to do a walkabout on the Upper Historic Block of the downtown. And the meeting point will be at Community First Community Room. And it's on the 12th at, or the 14th at 1:00. And then everyone present will be putting, their names will be put in for drawing for downtown business. There's a cash prize that will be given out. We've usually done the photo contest, and during COVID, we did the website. And now that we're about, we're going to have a walkabout and be a little more public with the Historical Society, talking about the buildings downtown. Thank you.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. Is, Stan, is this where we did the consent agenda?
No.
Nope. Oh, sorry. I'll forget it. Sorry.
Seeing no one else, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none? Tom, were you the second, or was Ted? Ted was the second. Okay. Motion carries. Item F is public comments. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak today? Right.
Good afternoon. Yeah. My name's Roger Connets. I live in the 516 Riverway in Manassia. And I'm here in support of the No May, No Mo May Resolution, which is our 1322. This program was started in Appleton three years ago, as you're aware of, and now it's been adopted in actually 34 more communities in Wisconsin. It's across our entire state. This is a testament to the popularity of the program and its expanding level of experience that you can, we have with communities that share the implementation plan. Thirty-four communities can be talked about and how to make that work. That's why they're adopting it. All citizens are, all citizens are asked to register at the program on their website. They post a sign in their yard, and that's available for a $5 donation. So those are the, that's what the website tells you to do when you register. This program has actually proven to be effective, as we've recently found that solitary native bees, which is what we're trying to protect, have increased threefold in diversity and fivefold in sheer numbers in Appleton since that implementation of the program three years ago. And I think this is great news personally, and I hope we all do, is that bees are vital to the plant pollination and the overall web of life that we all, our very existence, depends upon. So I really urge you to support this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roger. Is there anyone else this evening?
Hi, my name is Kyle Coonan. I live at 705 First Street in Manassia's beautiful Jefferson Park neighborhood. I'm also here to support the No Mo May Resolution and ask that you all vote in favor of it. It's not only beneficial to the environment and sustainability of our food sources, but it is a great thing for the city of Manassia to be part of. It is a positive thing, and it is reflected across this nation and international news. Just this morning, I saw something in Iowa that was a positive, about a mayor signing this for No Mo May in his town. The city of Manassia is a gem on the Lake Winnebago and Fox River, and it should be part of No Mo May. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Is there anyone else this evening?
Howdy, folks. I am Israel Del Toro. I am an Assistant Professor of Biology at Lawrence University. I'm also an alderman for District Four in the city of Appleton. And I am here to tell you about the science of No Mo May. I am the person that has conducted the research primarily on sampling bee biodiversity and understanding how bees impact our native ecosystems. We have found and documented a total of over 100 different species of bees here in the Fox City. So when you think about bees, you normally think about bumblebees and honeybees, but it turns out there's a ton more biodiversity out there, and they're really dependent on us to provide them early foraging foods. And so the idea behind No Mo May is pretty simple. We allow early, early things that we would normally call weeds to come into bloom and provide food for our native pollinators. And this is important because most of these bees are solitary bees, meaning they've overwintered, they spent a hard winter underground, they've hibernated, and they're coming, they're coming out of, out of this hibernation really, really hungry, much like a bear would after a long hibernation period. And they're looking for building up fast calories and fast, fast, cheap food, cheeseburgers essentially for, for our little bees. And that's what, and that's what dandelions and clover does. It's a voluntary opt-in, and I'll tell you a little bit about how it works in Appleton. It's a voluntary opt-in resolution, basically suspending the tall grass ordinance just for the month. And we do this all the time. Like, I do it in November, for example, when I decide to grow out my beard to bring awareness to men's health issues for the month of November. Or you can do anything for just a couple of weeks. And the goal of No Mo May is beyond just not mowing your lawn. It's also an opportunity for community education and outreach. Educate yourself and educate, or allow, allow me the opportunity to educate our community, our Fox Cities, about the benefits of pollinators and the things that we can do on our everyday lives to benefit our pollinators locally. Things like planting native species, removing invasives, using fewer chemicals on our lawns. All of those things go a long way in really protecting our native biodiversity and reflecting us as good stewards of our, of our backyards. I also want to point out that I do have signs printed that we have distributed in Appleton, and we'd be happy to make these available for the city of Manassia as well. The great thing about this, it lets your neighbors know that, hey, I'm not being lazy. I'm just caring about my environment. And a month from now, mow the lawn, everything goes back to normal. I'm also happy to report that in the city of Appleton, we haven't seen increases in pests like ticks, or rodents, or snakes. All of these are legitimate concerns, but I've done the surveying. We have no evidence suggesting that No Mo May causes increase in any sort of pest animals. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have. And thank you, and I urge you to support No Mo May. Cheers.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight?
I do, if there's nobody else.
Sure. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I just have a concern. Garrett, sorry. Garrett Lemon, 728 Lincoln Street, Manassia. I have a concern, a concern that I also brought up at the Fox Crossing meeting recently. And basically, it's over about the residents who live near the quarry in Manassia. And I bought a house very near there recently, like, two and a half years ago. And throughout the time living there enough times, I've noticed a lot of loud noise near there. And one day, it came down to 4:00 in the morning, 4:30 in the morning, I'm hearing like, it sounds like a dump truck or a bulldozer. And so I'm hearing like, something, like something's doing some heavy machine work. And hearing like, beep, 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 like something going in reverse. And so I like, and this has happened a few times. And so I like walked down the street a little bit and realized, oh, like, not far from here is a place called Buckland's Tree Service, and there's a bulldozer like loading wood chips into the back of a semi. And I was like, okay, this is interesting. And it was like 4:00, 4:30 in the morning, dark out. So it happened a few times. It disturbed me enough to where I was like, well, do they have a noise ordinance or something? Is there, is that allowed? I called the police. What it came down to is, they did some digging, they couldn't actually do anything. And the officer I talked to said, lots of people call about this. And they also call about in the winter, when Manassia has a lot of snow, they take their dump trucks of snow, which is usually a nighttime operation, off the sides of the roads where it heaps up, and dump it in the quarry. They actually pay Buckland's to do that. And that's, I've heard that going on and wondering what the heck is going on, and that's what it is. And so it's, I know it's a tough situation because it's a business, so they have a right to operate. But there's also houses like very close to there and all around there. And sometimes the times that stuff is going on there, like as far as them operating with heavy machinery, dump trucks, wood chippers, whatnot, is really early. And at times, it's happened late at night. And it's not every day, but it's happened enough times where it's like disturbing. And I called the police, and I'm not the only one, just to see like, is there, is this allowed? Like, is there anything we can do about this? And I'm not trying to be like offensive to the people who are doing their jobs, but like, it just seems kind of inconsiderate for when some of those houses, like, it's right in people's backyards. And I know some of them are rental properties, but some of them are also owned homes. And I think it's just a difficult situation for the people who live around there when there's things going on late at night, early in the morning. So I basically, and that's technically Fox Crossing, but I know some of the area is Manassia, so I figured I'd just bring it up here. That I know I've talked to a neighbor and just talking to the officer and all the complaints that they've had regarding that, that people would really appreciate if maybe there was some sort of like, between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, no loud stuff like that going on. Keep the, that kind of stuff in the times in the day when most people, most people, not everybody, most people are up during the day, sleep at night. So that's why I'm here. I just, I just wanted to raise that concern. I know I'm not the only one who has it. There are neighbors who have it, people who live even closer to there than me. And just hoping something can be done to, to help the citizens and their right to just have peace and quiet at times when I think that most people deserve to have peace and quiet later in the evening, early, early in the morning, before most people are up. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. We'll try to reach back out to you after the meeting and see if we can get in touch with you, okay?
Okay, thanks.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to move to approve the Common Council Minutes of 419 of 22.
There's a motion, a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item two is the new Common Council Minutes. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to move to approve the new Common Council Minutes of 419 22.
There's a motion, a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item two is the new Common Council Minutes. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the new Common Council Minutes of 419 22.
There's a motion, a second? Is there any discussion? Alderman Repella?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I noticed one thing on the, on the notes. It was $150 charge if you happen to miss three, three meetings. And I believe that I mentioned that it should be $200. So that was a typographical, or a typo error somehow. So it should be $200.
It should have been the first one.
Yeah.
Just approved. So, but anyways.
You told me the second one.
No, it's on the new Common Council. That's when we approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Should be 200, Mayor.
Okay. So, so we'll make, we'll approve the new Common Council Minutes with the correction as noted. I was just trying to find it here, and there's a lot of stuff in between here and there.
I did make the second, and I agree with Alderman Repella that it was 200 and not 150.
Okay. So if there's no objection?
Are you going to do that?
Alderman Gotti?
Yeah. Yeah, I also have to comment on those, I think it's the same, yes, the, the minutes have Alderman Ted Gotti voting no, on letter L, number one, page 59.
Oh, yes.
And I'm, I seconded Alderman Sevigny's motion for the resolution of the new Common Council rules. So I don't know how Haley that got in there, is Alderman Gotti.
How did that sneak under the radar?
It didn't. That's why I'm bringing it up.
So Tom, was that, was that you?
I don't remember.
I want to.
Unless...
So there's motion carried on roll call eight to one. So there's someone.
Alderman Nichols voted.
Jackie voted.
It's...
I voted against the amendment, but I voted for the rule. And I remembered going no on the rule.
I really did?
Yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we just leave this one on hold till the next meeting? We'll take no action on that at this point until we can get those corrected. We'll take a look at the table.
Okay, thank you. And then also on the next one, where, where it was changed from $100 to 200, motion carried six, two. I know Alderman Nichols voted no, but it said Ted Gotti voted no. I would have thought that would be my brother Tom, but I don't know if it was him. So Haley, if you can check on that one. Thank you.
Is your own protocol.
Is there a motion to table that until the next meeting?
I'm not, I'm not going to pause for until the next meeting.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll take that up again at the next meeting. The next item is action items. It's the accounts payable and payroll. We have a motion. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of April 15 through April 28, 2022, in the amount of $2,374,991.56.
There's a motion, a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
IT's working on it.
She said IT is working on getting the correct names on District Two and Four. Item two is to accept and spend a speed enforcement traffic grant. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to accept and spend the speed enforcement traffic grant funds for the summer of 2022.
I'll second it.
There's a motion, a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please. We'll get it taken care of for the next meeting.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item three is ordinances and resolutions. Item one is ordinance four. Do we have a motion? Alderman Gotti?
Yes, I do have a motion, but do I make the amendment to the motion first, or do I make the motion first? All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make the motion for ordinance four dash 22, an ordinance amending Title 12, Chapter 1 of the Code of Ordinances for the Park Regulations stating, "Park, Staff, and Park recommend the Common Council to approve this 0422," being an ordinance amending, like I said, Chapter 12, Title 12, Chapter 1 of the ordinances, "to allow for electric bikes, electric scooters, and electric personal assisted motor vehicles on the trail systems."
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So motion, a second by Alderman Repella? Then you wanted to amend it, Alderman Gotti?
Yes. Talking with Park and Rec Director Megan, and I think her and Police Chief Stike also mentioned, there's a Section 1211, the Park Regulations, parent 10. It doesn't have anything about emergency vehicles. So I'd like to add to Section 12 dash 1 dash 1, parent 10, motorized vehicles are restricted to the roads and driveways and parking areas except for authorized maintenance, emergency vehicles, electric bikes, electric personal mobile devices, and electric scooters. Those items were not mentioned on here, should be allowed on the trails.
So you want to amend Section 10, if you look at the next page, to say, except for authorized maintenance, emergency, or maintenance or emergency vehicles, and the other three things that were up there? And electric bicycles, electric scooters, and electric personal mobility devices?
Correct.
Okay. Was there a second for that amendment?
I'll second it.
So motion, a second for the amendment? Is there discussion on the amendment? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm needing some clarification here because Section 1211 deals with park regulations, the entire park. Section 12 dash 14 dash, or sorry, Section 12 dash 1 dash 14 deals specifically with the trails. Now, it is my understanding that we're looking to add some uses to the trails.
So let me ask Alderman Gotti if this is what he had intended. Are you looking at the sidewalks and areas like that that may not be a trail that you'd still be able to use a scooter or bike on? Is that what that was trying to comprehend?
Thank you. This is just parent 10. It's the motorized vehicles in the Section 12 dash 1 dash 1. I could have the Park and Rec Director Megan Sack explain more, if, if I may, or the Chief of Police. Is more for...
Okay, here's the problem. We have a cyclical issue between the, the ordinance as written would contradict itself because in 12114 as listed, we would be incorporating all of the park regulations, which would be 1211 through 12113, which the motorized vehicles is a part of. As listed, the motor, motorized vehicles does not include the electric vehicles that we're talking about, those three that were added to it. So in essence, we would be allowing it under 12114B, but it would not be allowed because we're incorporating 1211 motorized vehicles, which does not have those vehicles defined. State statute does define what a motorized vehicle is. And those electric ones that we're talking about are defined in Statute 340, under words and phrases defined as being a motor vehicle. So we have that generalness of it being a motor vehicle, but then we're saying it's, it is and it isn't. So we're just trying to be consistent with it by saying that, yes, the authorized maintenance vehicles, the emergency vehicles, because the fire department, police department sometimes have to go on there, and then just adding those other ones on there. So in essence, outside the specifically designated parking areas, yeah, if we can envision any other place within a park that those other vehicles would be allowed, I guess we're saying that, yes, it would be allowed, which would be the trails. So it's, that's your easiest fix to it. If not, you're going to get a lot more complicated because you wouldn't then technically be able to do 1211 through 12113. You'd have to do something different with that motorized vehicle portion, because otherwise we're in conflict. Because we're saying it's allowed, and we're saying it's not allowed.
Okay, so that's helpful. I'm reading this again.
Okay.
Section 121110, motorized vehicles, motor vehicles are restricted to the roads and drives and parking areas. And we could add trails, paved areas, except for authorized maintenance and emergency No person shall operate outside of areas specifically designated as parking areas. My, my concern is, are we broadening this too much that all of these motorized vehicles are allowed anywhere in the park? Because right now, as it reads, motor vehicles are not, are restricted except for authorized maintenance vehicles. We could add emergency. They can operate on areas outside.
Yeah, I think you raise a good point, and you certainly could be. I know the biggest area of concern was just making sure that we have the language then to incorporate them on the trails. So I guess another option would be to list those three types of vehicles and specifically call them out as, you know, electric motor vehicles to include. Those three are allowed on trails within, and leave that in the motor vehicle section. And then I guess it doesn't give you a broad base of saying that, you know, an electric scooter could be allowed on a tennis court, or, you know, some other place that we're not envisioning them to be allowed. And then just having the, the introduction of the emergency motor vehicles on anywhere in a park, which obviously is just something that's been missing. So I think you raise a good point. That would be your other way to accomplish the same thing. We just don't want to have the cyclical... We just don't want to have the cyclical being good in one spot and bad in the other spot.
Yeah, with the change proposed, I see any motorized vehicle being allowed anywhere in the park, even on grassy areas. Right now, only authorized maintenance vehicles are allowed in those areas. So I'm in favor of restricting motorized vehicles to paved areas. Okay. Then I need to hear it again, as what you're saying.
Alderman Captain wants to make a comment as well.
A turdy captain, you mean?
That's next month. That's next month when you become Alderman.
I would recommend postponing this till the next meeting.
Move to postpone till the next meeting.
Thank you.
Is there a second? So motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, we'll move on to Resolution 13. Hold on. Alderman Hammond?
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to bring Resolution R. 1322, a resolution recognizing May as no mow May and suspending the enforcement of Section 817.
So motion and a second. Discussion. Attorney Captain, do we need to have it in the motion, just 817? There was a typo. Alderman Hammond asked me to write this for him, and I gave him a typo. Whoops, go ahead.
Excuse me. Then I would just make the motion based on what you are expecting it to be.
So it should then include, including changing those three spots?
Just identifying the, yes.
So if you could just identify the three areas that it needs to be changed, Austin. I'm sorry. I keep turning you off. Go ahead.
Oh, no, that's okay. But what the resolution is, is there's a typo in the very beginning of the resolution, just stating what the suspending of which section is for the enforcement. And then there are two points of reference in the very last paragraph, the be it further resolved. It would be 817 instead of 816.
Okay, so there was a motion, I think there was a second? And Alderman Nichols was a second. Discussion. Alderman Sevenek?
Did you want to speak first on your topic? I was going to let Austin go first.
Alderman Hammond?
All right, thank you, Alderman Sevenek. I just want to say that I'm really excited about the prospects of no mow May, seeing our neighboring communities in the Fox Cities around the state and around the country, taking it on as a task, knowing that there's apprehension with the no mow May, but seeing what it can do for our pollinators and bees, what it's doing for the environment. I think the environment is just something we really need to take into consideration with the work that we do. The climate crisis isn't tomorrow's issue, it's yesterday's. So we, as a common council, have to weigh heavy with that. And I know it can come as perceived as an inconvenience to some folks. But the great thing is with this, we're doing it for this month, and this is only good for this year. So we can see how it goes, and if it doesn't go well, and people are upset with it, they don't like it, we don't have to do it again. But I think it's worth taking a chance on, and I want to thank the folks that came and spoke today on behalf of it, and the great work that's being done in the city of Appleton. So I would really encourage my colleagues to vote yes for no mow May. And with that, I yield.
You're so formal. Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. So I take opposition to this resolution. I probably had more people contact me on this issue than any issue. I've been on the council, I can't even tell you how many years, probably more than 25 years. So they're strongly opposed to this. They take pride in their neighborhoods. They take pride in keeping their lawns taken care of. We've had habitual abusers of this, and my issue with that is, what would happen is if we allow this down the road, say like in July, someone will not cut their grass, and then say, well, we allowed it, you know, for no mow May. So what's the big deal? I'm trying to do this for the environment. And I also appreciate the councilman that came here this evening and his support for this. But I just see there being better ways of doing this. And I'm a gardener. I'm a big gardener. I even have a fish pond in my backyard. I probably shouldn't be telling people that.
Do you have a permit for that, Alderman Sevenek?
But anyways. I keep an area in my garden specifically for this purpose, and I think that's the solution. I don't think one month of tall grass is the solution to helping our pollinators. Here's what I do. I have an area about four by four in my backyard that I have plants that are from Wisconsin, that are indigenous to this area. For instance, now, some may would say goldenrod is, and some would say it's not. But I have goldenrod. I have Queen Anne's Lace. You had mentioned the clover. I have that in my yard all year, and I have tons of bees. Also, the great plant, milkweed. And this isn't just a pollinator for bees, but for all kinds of insects that are important for us. And to me, the solution is having a garden. I think the same people that don't cut their grass aren't going to have a garden either. And I witnessed this going to a few rummage sales in Appleton, and the places that weren't cutting their grass, it was awful. And then when you do cut the grass, you have kind of like a dead lawn. So I don't think one month does it. And again, I'm going to state, for me, I agree, fewer chemicals is the way to go. I maintain my lawn. I actually have quite a bit of clover. And I can tell you, with, other than those plants, I'm also a gardener with all kinds of flowers. I'm at the garden centers all the time. And I can tell you, you had mentioned that there's more than 100 bees, bee species. I knew that, because I probably could easily count, you know, maybe 10 to 20 different kinds of bees in my backyard. I have the type that are as big as a golf ball or as small as a mosquito. And it's amazing, and I love it. I'm an environmentalist. So hopefully, people wouldn't say, well, jeez, he wasn't for no mow May. I just think there's a better way of doing this, and one month isn't the solution. And I'm going to be voting against this. I see my other colleagues have lights on. I'll let them get a word in. But I'm going to also mention a couple of things that I like about the ordinance. And number one is, you know, the communication and outreach, and to be able to let the community know, you know, what we're trying to accomplish when it comes to our smaller creatures. And the other thing is, I think it's a good idea to have that sign out there, so that people do know that this is what you're all about and why you're doing that. And also that you'd have to register at the city, because we do have enforcement issues. I have it in my neighborhood. I have an individual that has never cut his grass. Guess who cuts his grass? The city of Manassas. And then they bill him, and he doesn't care, because he probably gets a better deal than if he had a contractor. So I'm not going to vote for this. I'm from Greater Nina, Manassas, and we like to do things a little differently here. Sorry, post-Crescent, it isn't the greater Appleton area. And I know that Nina is also opposed to this, and they chose not to support this. And one last thing. And you being the expert, you probably know this, but I was told by Nina Alderman that dandelions are one of the worst types of pollinations for bees, because there are nutrients in there that are not necessarily good for them. But they love, they love dandelion, probably more than anything else. So get some clover, get some goldenrod, get some Queen Anne's Lace, and help our small creatures. To me, that's the solution.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. I got a smile. Representing District Eight, the newer, the out-east section of Manassas, contacted many of my constituents. Hands down, it was 100%, all voted no. We take great pride in our lawns. Many, many have lawn services, fertilizing companies. Also, even some have lawn services to cut their grass and trim. Again, I'm completely against it. As Alderman Sevenek said, Nina's not in support of this. I have some alternatives for this. We have huge city parks, Jefferson, Smith. Those are great places that we could allow grass to grow, if we are really needing to do this. And another thing, I think we should encourage the homeowners to plant flowers and different types of seedlings and whatnot to attract the bees in your yard year-round, rather than just doing this for one month. It is a pain to leave your grass grow to be six, eight inches tall, and then try to cut it. Lots of clumps, just not a good thing. Voles love long grass. I cut it right down to almost the dirt every November, and I don't get voles in my yard. Neighbors who keep the grass a little longer, the voles are plentiful. So again, District Eight residents, I'm supporting your vote. No mow for no mow May in Manassas. So thank you very much. We vote no to no, no, no mow May. Thank you, Mayor.
No, thank you. This, too, is a touchy subject, because I think I know how my brother's going to vote, but maybe I shouldn't say this either, but True Green just did my lawn today. So District Eight, I feel your pain. I don't, I, it might be a good idea. I kind of like where Austin's going, to give it a year trial. And if there's more complaints and negativity, then we take notes, and we do that. I'm thinking, I'm in District Seven, and then there's a lot of people out there, when they cut their grass, they blow the clippings into the street, and that just bugs the heck out of me. And at the end of May, if we got all these grass clippings going into the street, down the sewers, I know the Public Works Department is not going to be very happy with that either. So it's a little contrast of, you know, interest on both of that, and also for the code enforcer. On June 1st, if we do this no mow May, I'm going out with that code enforcer on June 1st, and we're going to start ticketing people that don't have their lawns cut. So I'm going to say no for this. First go around and see what the colleagues do vote on, and either way, I'll support it, but I'm just not in agreement of it. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. At first, I just want to thank the Sustainability Board for considering no mow May. I referred it after getting several requests from residents. So thank you to the Sustainability Board and to Alderman Hammond for putting his name on the resolution and bringing it to us tonight. Director Youngworth, are you comfortable addressing the rules laid out in the resolution? Thank you. Can you just talk about the rules for people who choose, who would choose to participate in no mow May?
Sure. So we would require registration, and any properties that had received a notification for cutting within the last 12 months would not be eligible. And that's to help kind of weed out, not intending for that to be a pun, but weed out some of the individuals that are habitual, non-compliance individuals.
Okay, so folks who choose to participate in no mow May would need to register?
And place a sign.
And have a sign in their front yard showing that they are participating in no mow May. And folks who are not registered or are chronic offenders of the policy, the weed ordinance, would not be allowed to participate. And it's because of this that I think this resolution has sufficient parameters to track residents, or to track participants in the program, and to restrict chronic offenders of the weed ordinance as well. And I don't anticipate a lot of folks participating in it the first year even. If it continues, I think more will participate. But in the first year, I don't expect a lot of participants. I mean, Manassas certainly isn't going to be an overgrown lawn in general. Some people, a few people will choose to participate because they're passionate about supporting pollinators, and also grow gardens in their backyard, so they get a kickstart on the growing season. And I firmly believe that people have rights to enjoy their yard, and this is one way that folks who are interested can enjoy their yard. So I will support this resolution, and I really encourage us to at least give it a try for a year and see what happens. Director Youngworth, is there, do you think it would be possible to get a report back to the common council in June or July to sort of, to summarize how many people participated, and how it went, and if you saw any problems, what was successful, what could be changed?
We can certainly do that.
That would be great. Thank you.
Alderman Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to weigh in on this. I am not against pollinators in any way, shape, or form. They are very important to us. However, I do not really think this is the best avenue we can take to educate everyone. I know it's the big tag word of no mow May. I do know that in my district alone, I had a lot of issues with non-mow issues within the yard, in people's yards last summer. It's a constant struggle. I know that, yeah, we're going to require registration. It's a $5 sign. The problem is, what happens if people don't register, people don't pay for the sign? You know, it's giving this carte blanche of, well, slap on the hand, don't do it this year. Okay, we'll let you slide. To me, there's just too many issues with it. We already have issues with code enforcement, period, within our city for a lot of other reasons, other than mowing lawns. I would like to really see our code enforcement work on those other issues of junk in the yards and lots of other terrible issues we have in the city, not being spent time on this no mow May. I would like to personally see the whole organization take a lot more interest in educating the people as far as what to plant in your yard, how to plant it, how to take care of it. That is a long-range plan, which I think is a lot better plan than just one month of not mowing. So I'm not in, you know, support of this, just because I think there's a lot better ways we can do this than one month out of the year. Thank you.
Alderman Nizera?
I'm going to voice my opinion based off of my constituents. I see both sides of for and against. So most of my constituents had said they were not interested in it. A lot of them had concerns about what if they don't participate, their neighbor does, weeds go into their yard, who's going to be responsible for that? I think if we do touch this topic again in the future, I think this year would be a good year to run a control study, to see what kind of current species and things we currently have in Manassas, and kind of go from there. But besides that, I agree with Schmidt that we could... But besides that, I agree with Schmidt that we could educate more. And, because I personally don't know a lot about flowers, so I would like to learn more myself. But for the vote, I'm going to say I'm not for this. And that's all I have.
Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. Well...
Sorry.
Right. I'm the last one here, and I've gotten only positive response from my constituents. I kind of live in the one area, it's, there's a lot of nature out there, and they're... Well, personally, I do not have a lawn. But I have more flowers than any of you, so... Yes, I do. I go all the way down the road and all the way to the lake. I've wrapped my flowers around your house six times, Stan. So, the important thing, we're talking about education, and the important thing is this first month when they're coming out of hibernation. This is when they need to feed. You could plant all you want, but if you're cutting up the bees before they can get out of the ground, or coming out of the ground, if you ever walk around, you see those big lazy bumblebees that are like, like they're drunk, they're just floating on the lawn. And those are the ones that we're trying to protect, and get them a good start for that first month. So, I really think this is an important issue to deal with. And so, it is a trial base for a year. What's the big deal? We always, it's the sky's falling, the sky's falling with this council half the time that irritates me so much. But I'm for this, so I'm done.
In Israel, we don't allow public comments during the meeting. I'm sorry. So, is there any other further discussion? Seeing done, we'll take a roll call vote then.
So, you vote yes, you want it, if you vote no, you don't want it.
Yeah, that's correct.
Motion fails 3-5.
And the next item is public comment. Here's your opportunity.
Start thinking about next year, okay? I just want to clarify, I'm also a PhD in ecology and evolutionary biology. I understand how nature works. I've spent many, many years reading and understanding about things like floral emergence and senescence, and the ideas of appropriate timing and matching those wonderful flowers that you pointed out to the bees. You also pointed out mistakenly that dandelions are no good for pollinators. They're not the best. I agree. They're cheeseburgers, they're cheeseburgers. They're just trying to put on a lot of fat really, really quickly. And then, and then they transition into resources that are more valuable for them. But what they need early on is that big food source, that big, big floral input. And so, the month of May itself is a very important time. One month makes a big difference. The data show it, right? The data also show that there is no increase in ticks, or mice, or voles. In fact, I've done the trapping myself, and have seen no significant difference between non-mowed lawns and mowed lawns in terms of the number of mice and voles that I'm catching. So, these are things that I just do. I'm a biologist, I'm a data scientist, I go out there, I get my hands dirty. There's constantly dirt under my fingernails, because I'm also a gardener. And I care about our food resources, and I care about, you know, what's going to pollinate my tomatoes when the time comes, or my chili peppers, or my peas. Hey, guess what? All of those crops are dependent on bees. All of those things are dependent on those little things. And yeah, I mean, I get it, Ted, you got your lawn sprayed by True Green today. That's totally fine, I respect it. But at the same time, I want you to, I want to encourage you to educate yourself about alternative ways that you can reduce your use and dependency on chemicals, save yourself some bucks, and at the same time, be a better steward of your environment. So, this is a learning opportunity for all of us as a community. We do it in Appleton, and I know that the way we do things in Appleton can seem crazy. But guess what? No crazy ordinances, no habitual offenders have recurred because of this passing. In fact, this is our third year. We saw an uptick in complaints in the month of June, about, I think it was 7% the first year and 9% the second year, in terms of complaints. So, the world didn't burn down. There is no craziness that happened. And as far as damage to lawns and regeneration to lawns, it's actually really healthy for lawns to grow to the seed point. And the seed point actually fills in your lawn, so you're kind of covering up those bald spots that would normally occur by actually reseeding your lawn at relatively low cost to yourself and not using further chemicals. So, teachable moment, opportunity for us all. I think there's room for growth here. There, I strongly encourage you to start thinking about no mow May for next year. Try it as a one-year resolution, and if it fails in Manassia, it fails in Manassia. And it's like, oh, we tried that, we experimented, we were open about it. Here's what the data show for Manassia. I'd be wildly surprised if it was different than the data, what the data have shown in Appleton. But thank you all for considering it today, and hopefully, we'll see you again next year. Cheers.
Thank you. You're welcome to come up. Roger as well.
Roger, 516 Riverway. I haven't moved since I was here. One of the things we sensed of the vote, we had talked about education. I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about supporting the Manassia Library and the efforts that they're trying to do is bring in educational discussions about plants, natives, how to take care of things. It's all part of a, how do we do shoreline work? There's a lot of opportunities we can, but if we can all get together with all the different committees across the city, trying to educate ourselves about native plants. There's wild ones, there's, what was it, Lakes District areas, the Fox Wolf River Alliance. They just had a talk at the library. We tried to get people there, there were six. But that's a start. So, Manassia, the Sustainability Board is trying to get this education thing going. And I'd really appreciate it if other folks can join in that banner and educate ourselves in preparation for possibly what might happen next year or the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I also didn't move. I'm not surprised, unfortunately. I'm new to Manassia, just over two years here. I viewed this city, when I moved into it, as matrasha. And that was wrong to think. When I moved here, I realized I was wrong. And it's a gem. This was a trial. We asked you for a year. We asked you, we gave you the, you know, things to maintain the order, and it wasn't mandatory to participate. You could true greening until your little cancer developed. But this works in all levels. And I garden, and I no mow May. And I will continue to encourage everyone to participate, but not ever be upset when they don't. But the fact that we couldn't even take a year to see how it works, to give it a try, to fall within the borders of rules and allow a little adventure. The whole point of this is education, and there was very consistent ideas on, where's the education? This is our point of education. We start here with the words no mow May. Much like no shave November, we say, "Hey, take a look at this, learn something. Participate if you'd like. If you can't grow a beard very well, who cares?" You made out to show that you cared about men's health. If you don't want to mow your May, or mow your lawn in May, you show that you care about the environment in some little way. But if you mow, you don't say you hate it, you just like mowed lawn. I hope dearly that one of you, just one of you, will change your opinion next year and give this a year trial. And if it doesn't work out, we don't have to be Appleton. We don't have to pay high taxes and pretend we like the post crescent and act like we're big shots. But we can be that gem on Lake Winnebago that looks beautiful and is full of wildlife and has people who care and have value in their property, their community, and the world. I yield.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, if we could have a motion to adjourn. There's a motion a second. All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.
The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the city of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, To express opinions about city of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office, 920-967-3608. Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.